Deputized, in a sense, to make sure that our school is safe. They've been empowered to be the guardians of our younger children on playgrounds and to make sure that everything is safe in the school throughout the day and to report any trouble that they may see. You know, safety is a big issue throughout any district this large. And when we're able to get our young men and women to participate and serve as role models for their colleagues in school, especially for the younger children, it is an incredibly special moment. And this is another one of those things that Ms. Jimenez is doing in School 28. She's empowering her children and making them part of the magic that happens in the school. So I'd like to recognize the Safety Patrol.
I don't have a list of their names. I don't have a list of their names, so you're just gonna go down a line here? I would actually just tell everybody who you are, okay?
(Inaudible)
Helen Chavez.
Leah Trevers.
Carrie Benitez.
Calvin Dinoza.
Heidi Chapin.
Elma Rina.
Diana Curran.
Marissa Murphy.
Anthony Mutu.
Maysha Borcer.
Yolanda Mador.
Elavos Woolsey.
Margarita Omeagans.
Safety Patrol! Thank you, guys. Thank you. We have a working great photo, okay? I'd like to recognize Mr. John Dinozo, Commissioner Dinozo has joined us tonight.
Mr. President?
Mr. President. Support recognizes Commissioner Balthus.
Yes. Before we move on, I just want to recognize First Ward Thompson and Carlos Flores for being here and supporting the Board of Education. Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy, take us through the agenda.
Thank you. Approved minutes of the meetings of January 17th and 23rd.
Approved minutes?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Giro, seconded by Commissioner Pereira.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Dinozo.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nazco.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Carrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Second, acceptance of the Secretary's monthly report for December.
Accept the report.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Trillo, seconded by Commissioner Pablo. Ropo.
Balthus.
Yes. Yes.
Dinozo.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nazco.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Carrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Oh, question. Did you say, did you mean December or January?
December 2014. 2A Personnel Report.
The report.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Gonzalez, seconded by Commissioner Trillo. Any questions or comments? See you none, robo.
Balthus.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Dinozo.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nazco.
Yes, with an extension on page two, please.
Padlo.
Yes.
Carrer.
Yes, with an extension on page 26.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
F3 Tuition Report.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Gonzalez, seconded by Commissioner Spina. Any questions or any comments? See you none, robo.
Balthus.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Dinozo.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nazco.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Carrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
4A Request for Considerations.
Move the report.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Pereira, seconded by Commissioner Balthus. Any questions or any comments? Mr. President, Mr. Trillo.
I motion to postpone 4A so that I may inquire a little further.
Motion to table 4A.
It was a motion to table, which said?
4A.
That 4A. We have motion for a table from Commissioner Trillo, it was seconded by Commissioner Pereira. Any questions and comments? Oh, I'm sorry, there's no, it's not a table. So, robo.
Balthus.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Dinozo.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nazco.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Carrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
4B Use of Facilities. I'd like to move it with a waiver of fees.
Second. It was a motion by Commissioner Pereira, seconded by Commissioner Trillo. Any questions or any comments? See you none, robo.
Balthus.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes, extension in 4A.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nazco.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Carrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
4C Speed Trips.
Move the trips.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Trillo, seconded by Commissioner Pereira. Any questions or any comments? See you none, robo.
Balthus.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Dinozo.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nazco.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Carrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Superintendent's Report. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Mr. President, members of the Board, like to present to you the actions occurred in our district since our last board meeting. Two members of the 2012 Northern Jersey Section 2 Group 5 State Champion Elizabeth Committee of Football Team have signed letters of intent on National Signing Day to attend Temple University. Phil J. Walker, a three-star pocket passer, quarterback, ranked number 33 in the country at his position by ESPN.com, and Jahad Thomas, a three-star running back, ranked number 173 in the country at his position by ESPN.com, are both committed to play for Temple University. First graders at Juan Pablo Roche de Jose, PM, Marti, School Number 28, are busy learning and experimenting with pebbles, sand, and silk module. Thanks to all the hard work and teachers and students in grades 2 through 8 from Madison Monroe School Number 16, who participated in the Math-a-Thon for St. Jude Children's Hospital, $3,515 will be sent to St. Jude Children's Hospital in Memphis, Tennessee. On January 8th, the American Red Cross conducted their blood drive at Thomas Edison Career and Technical Academy. Terrance C. Riley's School Number 7 Destination Imagination Team has chosen to do the Science and Community Service Challenge this year. They've decided to create a series of fundraisers through their organization via Panda to raise awareness of the red panda, an endangered species, and to raise money to adopt the red pandas at the Turtle Back Zoo. The students in Ms. Fitzgerald's 2nd Grade Class and Robert Moore's School Number 18 went right to the top when they wrote letters to President Obama. Emily Contreras, a 4th Grade Grader from Dr. Albert Einstein Academy, School Number 29, had her artwork selected to represent Union County at the State Youth Arts Month exhibit in Trenton, New Jersey. During the first two weeks of January, the nursing assistant and Union Secretary students from Thomas Edison Career and Technical Academy became CPR certified. First grade bilingual students in Ms. Mendel and Ms. Carrer and Mills' class at Benjamin Franklin School Number 13 researched many ways people can help endangered species. Students at John Guar Technology Academy and Willamette Halsey Junior Leadership Academy participated in an artistic journey that helped them to experience personal growth and enrichment. They took part in motivation to change and art projects designed to encourage a positive future. On January 25th, 20 students from Thomas Edison Career and Technical Academy, 20 students from John Guar Technology Academy, attended workshop on industrial leadership in the areas of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. Mrs. Swartas' class at Victor Madlax School Number 21 and Willie McCallan School Number 22 learned a valuable lesson about working in groups. In order to complete a project-based learning, each 2nd Grade student chose a topic to research from among many, including natural resources in the jungle, climate in the jungle, building a shelter, and finding food. On January 24th, computer literacy students from Victor Madlax School 21 and Willie McCallan School Number 22 went on a field trip to Morris Museum to learn how people entertain themselves before electronics like iPads and computers were invented. Students in Mr. Velindo's Theatre Class in John Marshall School Number 20 and Charles Hudson School Number 25 were assigned a project on hurricanes. Students were able to create tables and make generalizations based on the data. 8th Grade students at Madison Monroe School Number 16 were exposed to college experience. 26 students were able to visit King University. On December 5th, 7th and 8th grade avid students at Winfield Scott School Number 2 traveled to Ghana Africa via teleconference technology. On January 17, 18, and 19, Thomas Jefferson Arts Academy proudly presented the importance of being earnest by Oscar Wilde. Robert Moore's School Number 18 8th graders went on a highly anticipated college visit to King University in Union, New Jersey. On Friday, January 9th, approximately 50 families attended Nicholas Mary Butler School Number 23's family mat night for students in grades K to 5. On January 27th, Ken Rizoso of the Elizabeth Rotary Club donated dictionaries to 3rd Grade students at Dr. Albert Einstein Academy School Number 29. Classroom Close-Up MJ, a program focusing on innovative products and groundbreaking teaching methods in New Jersey's public schools, came to Dr. Antonia Pantora School Number 27. Classroom Close-Up spent the entire day on January 23 meeting with students, teachers, and administrators to learn about and to film some of the projects which have evolved from the integration of digital media and other 21st century learning skills into everyday lessons. The students of 4207 at Dr. Orlando Dura Academy recently completed an international baccalaureate unit, How We Organize Ourselves. Students at Terrance C. Riley School Number 7 created unique paper snowflakes that were contributed to the Snowflakes for the St. Jude Project. And at the Second Annual Maxwell Football Club New Jersey High School Awards Dinner on January 13th at the Helen J. Cocteau New Brunswick, Elizabeth's Philip Walker was named 2012 Mini-Max High School Award winner. You can continue to follow the excellence news from Elizabeth Public Schools on wwwepsnj.org. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Pad number 5 Authorization Report.
Full report.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Gonzalez, seconded by Commissioner Trillo. Any questions or any comments? See you none, robo.
Balthus.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Dinozo.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nazco.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Carrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Six Finance and Accounting Report.
Move the report.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Gonzalez, seconded by Commissioner Gonzalez. Any questions or any comments?
Mr. President.
Mr. Trillo.
I'd just like to note that now that we have the pleasure of being here in the Elizabeth Court, that party sustains the commitment the Elizabeth Board of Education has to all children throughout the district. And you'll see that here we're going to be paying tuition to the Elizabeth Port Presbyterian Center for the fine work here at Elizabeth Port, running one of the preschool programs. And that is a continued commitment by this Board that has really, really shown, has borne a lot of fruit in this community and I continue to support that. Thank you all for your generosity and commitment to the Elizabeth Port children.
Thank you, Commissioner Trillo. Any other comments?
Question.
See you none, robo.
Balthus.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Dinozo.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nazco.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes, with an extension at 22.
Carrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'd like to read it, if that's on column number 21. Thank you. 6A Transfer of Funds.
Transfer of Funds.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Giro, seconded by Commissioner Gonzalez. Any questions or any comments? See you none, robo.
Balthus.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Dinozo.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nazco.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Carrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
F7 Award of Contracts.
Award of Contracts.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Giro, seconded by Commissioner Gonzalez. Any questions or any comments? See you none, robo.
Balthus.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Dinozo.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nazco.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Carrer. Ms. Carrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Eight Mislandous Communications. There are none. Pad 9 Claims List.
Please claims.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Trillo, seconded by Commissioner Gonzalez. Questions, comments? See you none, robo.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Dinozo.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nazco.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Carrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Grab some resolutions.
Mr. Dinozo, Commissioner Dinozo, would you do with the...
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Kennedy. I'd like to update on Pad 9 on page 23.
Pad 9, 23.
Mr. Dinozo, would you, with the pleasure of being here in this kind of school's month resolution?
Certainly. Board of Education Resolution, Music in Our Schools Month. Whereas music education encompasses all of the academic disciplines and is an integral part of the overall educational program. And whereas music education offers all students in Elizabeth Public Schools the opportunity to participate in the performing arts, and whereas schools are the primary place where students' talents and abilities in the performing arts are encouraged. And whereas music education fosters disciplined accomplishment and the development of positive self-images among our student body. And whereas the school spirit, patriotism, civic pride, and compassion demonstrated by our students have been nurtured and encouraged through the music programs in our schools. Now, therefore be it resolved that the members of the Elizabeth Board of Education hereby proclaim the month of March 2013 as Music in Our Schools Month and urge all citizens to support the Elizabeth Public Schools music programs through attendance at concerts, recitals, lectures, rehearsals, and other special activities planned by the outstanding music educators in our district. Be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be forwarded to all school principals and media specialists to encourage the implementation of programs that highlight Music in Our Schools Month. I move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by Dinozo, seconded by Gonzalez. Ropo.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Dinozo.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nazco.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Carrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Resolution 10A, Mr. Dinozo Spina.
National School Social Workers Week. Whereas Elizabeth Public Schools are fortunate to have on web training skilled social workers, all staff who are totally dedicated to helping our students reach their full potential as human beings, and whereas Elizabeth School Social Workers provide supportive services to students, schools, families, and the community to crisis intervention, and give a join group counseling, support groups, student family advocacy, policy and procedure development, transition services, social development assessment, and information and referral services, and where students today face many inauthentic social emotional problems that threaten their ability to learn effectively and inhibit their progress towards becoming productive and happy adults, and where the Elizabeth School Social Workers daily activities are viewed as a vital part of the education process in favor of removing these barriers to learning, maximizing academic opportunities, promoting safe schools, ensuring that education is safe for all. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Elizabeth Board of Education hereby proclaim the week of March 3 to 9, 2013, as National School Social Workers Week. In recognition of Elizabeth Public Schools social workers, excuse me, and all the outstanding of principled services they provide each day in preparing our students to become responsible, productive, and successful members of society. Be it resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to all school principals and librarians to focus attention on the role of the school social workers in our students. To all the social workers for Elizabeth and out there and myself, I would probably move this resolution.
Second. Moved by Mr. Spina, seconded by Mr. Trillo. Ropo.
Balthus.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Dinozo.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nazco.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Carrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
With pleasure, Mr. President. Board of Education Resolution, Read Across America. Whereas the members of the Elizabeth Board of Education firmly believe that reading is a major catalyst in the quest for student academic success and in the development of the skills and knowledge all of our graduates must possess to secure good and rewarding jobs, and whereas there is little doubt that reading is key to lifelong learning and personal growth, and whereas the Elizabeth Board of Education has consistently encouraged and supported efforts of our community to become involved in the education of our youth, understanding that this initial investment in our children will ultimately contribute to our city's well-being and to its residents' quality of life. And whereas Read Across America is a national event celebrated in March each year on the birthday of the well-known children author, Dr. Seuss. And whereas Read Across America, Read Across America is designed to encourage children to read and adults to become involved in the education of their community's children. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board of Education enthusiastically endorse the Read Across America event and urge students, staff, and community members to take part in all of the Read Across America activities that will take place on March 1, 2013, which are designed to help America's children become the best readers in the world. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to all school principals and media specialists to encourage district-wide participation in Read Across America celebrations. I move this resolution.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Trillo, seconded by Commissioner Balthus. Ropo.
Balthus.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Dinozo.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nazco.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Carrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
We have St. Joseph's Day Resolution, Tennessee. Commissioner Nashville.
Thank you, Mr. President. Board of Education Resolution, St. Joseph's Day. Whereas March 19th has traditionally been known throughout the world as a Christian feast honoring St. Joseph. And whereas within the United States, in recent years, the date of March 19th has taken on additional meaning. And whereas every year on March 19th, the contributions of Italian-Americans are enumerated and recognized by celebrating St. Joseph's Day, by wearing and displaying the color red, and by preparing St. Joseph's tables to honor the patron saint. And whereas the people of this nation have benefited greatly from all that Italian-Americans have done to make the United States the remarkable country it is today. And whereas the history of our own city of Elizabeth is especially rich with stories concerning Italian immigrants, contributions in support of the growth and development of this city. And whereas the tradition stories, music, humor, religion, and history of Italian-Americans have enriched all of our lives. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Elizabeth Board of Education acknowledge all that Italian-Americans have done to make our nation, state, and city a wonderful place to live, grow, and raise families. Be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be forwarded to all principals and media specialists to encourage activities and lessons relating to the history and contributions of Italian-Americans. I so move this resolution.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Nashville, seconded by Commissioner Trillo. Ropo.
Balthus.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Dinozo.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nazco.
Yes.
Padlo.
Yes.
Carrer.
Yes.
Trujillo.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
St. Patrick's Day Resolution. Mr. Dinozo.
Yes, President.
Board of Education Resolution, St. Patrick's Day. Whereas March 17th has traditionally been known throughout the world as a Christian feast day honoring St. Patrick. And whereas within the United States in recent years, St. Patrick's Day has taken on an on an additional meaning. And whereas, Saint Patrick's Day is a traditional day for spiritual renewal and offering prayers for missionaries worldwide. And whereas, every year on March seventeenth, this country now pauses for a moment to remember Irish Americans, both living and dead, who contributed to the growth and development of our nation by celebrating Saint Patrick's Day and by displaying and wearing the colors green and gold. And whereas, the people of this nation have benefited greatly from all the Irish Americans have done to make the United States a prosperous nation. And whereas, the history of our own city of Elizabeth is especially rich with stories concerning Irish immigrants, contributions towards the advancement of our city. And whereas, the tradition stories, music, humor, religion, and history of Irish Americans have enriched all of our lives. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Elizabeth Board of Education acknowledge that all Irish Americans have done to make our nation, state, and city a wonderful place to live, grow, and raise families. Be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be forwarded to all principals and media specialists to encourage activities and lessons relating to the history and contributions of Irish Americans. I move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Balthus, second by Commissioner Denosa, robo.
Balthus.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Padla.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trahia.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Women's History Month Resolution, Ms. Balthus.
Yes. Board of Education Resolution, Women's History Month. Whereas, throughout our history, women of all backgrounds and beliefs have played a substantial and significant role in the growth and development of the United States of America. And whereas, with courage, determination, and pride, women have fought both to be recognized for their achievements and for just and equal treatment as citizens of this country. And whereas, it is important that our students remain aware of the value and significance of contributions of women to all aspects of American life. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Elizabeth Board of Education proclaim the month of March two thousand thirteen as Women's History Month and urge all citizens to share in acknowledging the courageous battles women have waged throughout the history of equality and justice. Be it therefore resolved that copies of this resolution be forwarded to all principals and media specialists to encourage appropriate studies, lessons, activities, and displays in classrooms throughout this district and recognizing of the contributions women have played in this state and to this nation. I so move this resolution.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Balthus, second by Commissioner Gonzalez, robo.
Balthus.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Padla.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trahia.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
National School Breakfast Week Resolution, Commissioner Gonzalez.
My pleasure. Board of Education Resolution, National School Breakfast Week. Whereas, breakfast programs can increase educational achievement, improve child health, decrease classroom disruption and discipline problems, and improve school attendance. And whereas, there is evidence that concentrating more on calories early in the breakfast results in better weight control because the body uses the calories more efficiently over the course of the day. And whereas, a school breakfast program increases a child's readiness to learn and so enables them to obtain the full benefits from instructions while providing solid nourishment for physical growth. And whereas, nearly eleven thousand four hundred fifty-nine Elizabeth students choose at school breakfast each day. And whereas, a recent USDA study involving seven thousand individuals monitored over a ten-day period clearly reveals that those who eat breakfast high in sugar have a short attention span and are less able to concentrate. Now, therefore be it resolved that in order to provide every child in the Elizabeth Public Schools the opportunity to reach their full potential by starting the day with a nutritious breakfast, the Elizabeth Board of Education observed that the week of March fourth through the eighth, two thousand and thirteen, as National School Breakfast Week. Be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be forwarded to all principals to encourage parents and residents to become aware that the school breakfast contributes to the health, education, and value of our children. So I move this resolution.
Moved by Commissioner Gonzalez, second by Commissioner Balthus, robo.
Denosa. I just want to make one comment. One of the things that I don't know if you are aware, we provide free breakfast to every child in the district. Every school has three breakfasts. So again, as a child, you don't have time to make sure that, you know, he or she had breakfast. And that's important that we have taken that step to make sure they have breakfast. Right now, we only have a little over half our students taking advantage of it. So I want to make sure parents are aware and make sure that they, you know, the children tell you that they have to pay or something because it's free for every child.
Balthus.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Padla.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trahia.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Can I have free?
Youth Art Month Resolution, Commissioner Ferrer.
Yes, Mr. President. Board of Education Resolution, Youth Art Month. Whereas, the arts are universal languages that bring beauty into people's lives and provide for countless wonderful experiences through both active participation and sheer enjoyment. And whereas, school is the primary place for encouraging awareness of the arts as well as for developing students' artistic interests and talents. And whereas, there is tremendous learning potential for all children in the arts. Whereas, through the arts, children can develop a sense of security and purpose that can be carried forward into the areas of life they're in. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Elizabeth Board of Education hereby proclaim the month of March two thousand thirteen as Youth Art Month and urge all citizens to support the arts programs in the Elizabeth Public Schools through participation in the classes and special activities planned by the outstanding art educators in our district. Be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be forwarded to all school principals and media specialists to encourage the implementation of programs that highlight Youth Art Month in our schools. I move this resolution.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Ferrer, second by Commissioner Trahilo, robo.
Balthus.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Padla.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trahia.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
We have the National Nutrition Month Resolution, Commissioner Trahilo.
I'm going to defer, Mr. President. I am not one to read the national, I am not a, a good advocate for nutrition, as you can see. I eat a lot of junk food. I do support it, I think it's a great initiative, but I'm probably not the one to read this. Thank you.
I want to ask your Commissioner, Mr. Nasco.
Gladly, Mr. President. National Nutrition Month. Whereas, the Elizabeth Board of Education recognizes the importance of National Nutrition Month, established by Joint Resolution of Congress in nineteen seventy-two and observed nationwide during the month of March. And whereas, the future of our city rests in the sound health and general well-being of our children. And whereas, proper diet is essential to good health and intellectual development, and diet is an important part of the disease prevention. And whereas, learning about nutrition, healthy and wise food choices early in life provides valuable information and appreciation of a healthy lifestyle. And whereas, obesity and other diseases are related to poor food choices and poor nutritional habits which affect the child's learning experiences. And whereas, there is evidence of continued need for nutrition education and the awareness of the contributions of school breakfast and lunch programs to the student's ability to concentrate and improve academic performance. Whereas, these nutrition programs are an integral part of the student's day. Utilizing time and space in the school building contributes to learning and developing of good eating habits. And now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Elizabeth Board of Education hereby proclaim and recognize the month of March two thousand, March two thousand thirteen as National Nutrition Month to foster good eating habits in children and adults. Be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be forwarded to all school principals and nurses to encourage all parents to become aware and concerned about their children's and their own nutrition habits in hope of achieving a more healthful citizenry for today and for the future. I so move this resolution.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Nasco, second by Commissioner Denosa, robo.
Balthus.
Yes.
Castilla.
Yes.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nazca. Yes. Padla.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trahia.
I feel like my mother could have wrote this resolution for me and explained all the support choices I made. But yes, I support it.
Montero.
Yes.
We have the second reading of revised policy file code three to seven, relations with vendors, and a resolution for adoption.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Trahilo, second by Commissioner Denosa. Is there any questions or any comments? Sienna, robo.
Balthus. Castilla.
Yes.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Padla.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trahia.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Ten J Resolution Agreement with Essex Regional Educational Service for Transportation Services.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Trahilo, second by Commissioner Gonzalez. Uh, I want Commissioner Ferrer, did you have any questions or comments? Make the resolution or did I get your answers?
No, I got it right.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Sienna, robo.
Balthus. Castilla.
Yes.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Padla.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trahia.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Resolution ten K, K approval of long-range facility plan amendment.
Move the resolution.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Gonzalez, second by Commissioner Trahilo. Questions or comments? Sienna, robo.
Balthus. Castilla.
Yes.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Padla.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trahia.
Yes.
Montero. Resolution ten L, in support of new school facility.
Move the resolution.
Second.
It was moved. Moved by Commissioner Gonzalez, second by Commissioner Balthus. Any questions or comments? Sienna, robo.
Balthus. Castilla.
Yes.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Padla.
Yes.
Ferrer.
Yes.
Trahia.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
And we have first reading of the following revised policies, regulations, and exhibit. Policy fourteen-ten, local units. A policy regulation exhibit five-one-four-one-point-four, child abuse and neglect. Policy five-one-four-five-point-five, photographs of students. A policy and regulation five-one-four-five-point-one-one, questioning and apprehension, apprehension. Policy six-thousand-point-two, accountability. And exhibit nine-one-one-five-X, oath of office. And all of these are available for review in the office of the School Business Administrator Board Secretary. And that completes the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. We're now going to go to, citizens may now address the board. At this time, the microphones are open for public comment to those who have signed in prior to this session. I shall call individuals to the microphone based on the order of the sign-in. Each statement made by participants shall be limited to three minutes in duration. The total time of public comment shall be limited to sixty minutes. No individual is able to yield their time to another individual. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually, and the following rules for public participation shall apply. The time limits will be strictly enforced. No personal attacks on individuals, no vulgar or indecent language. A person may address the board no more than once during a single meeting, and speakers should refrain from naming individuals. Comments or questions posed during public participation will not be debated. As a reminder, this is a meeting of the board in public, not a meeting of the public. I will now call the first speaker, Iris Flores. Good evening, Ms. Flores. Is, can someone help her?
Can somebody help me?
Okay.
Okay, um, wow, you know, good evening, everyone. I basically had a question about your minutes, but I see that you guys...
Can you speak into the microphone?
I was, it's too loud. Okay, I basically had a question about your minutes because two days ago I went over to the Board of Education to speak to Mr. Kennedy. So I'm just wondering if there's any way possible, anyone out there can correct something or explain it to me about the public access to minutes. Minutes regarding should be available to the public for inspection within two weeks of the meeting. I didn't understand what it means, so I'm here to ask what it means because Mr. Kennedy said I couldn't have it. However, it doesn't state whether it needs to be approved first. It just says that I can see it within two weeks of the meeting. Now, it doesn't state the meeting as coming or the meeting prior, so I just want some clarification if that's okay from anyone.
Well, if you can reach out to, to Kirk Nelson, and then I guess, Mr. Denosa can get that information to you and clarify some of your questions and concerns.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Our next speaker is Jose Rodriguez.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Rodriguez, how are you?
Good. Um, in the past nine months, this Board of Education has had four resignations, and each one of those resignations, within ten minutes of it being publicly announced, has been filled. Um, according to your bylaws, the rules that you set for yourselves, you as a governing body have sixty-five days to fill a vacancy. I understand that sometimes you may not need that long. It also says that the vacancy must be advertised in the local media and that interviews with candidates should be conducted in public. These are your bylaws that you have written and that you adhere to, and only one commissioner, Ms. Balthus, voiced any opposition in the last vacancy that was filled. Um, what I'm upset about is that really, I believe you haven't done the due diligence that morally and ethically what you have done in terms of filling these vacancies within ten minutes, fifteen minutes of them becoming public has failed our community. I believe that you've given the proper attention to filling the vacancy that it deserves. Um, I also believe that you failed the community, the parents, the voters, and I hope that if vacancy were to occur in the future, that you would take it a little bit more serious. You have time to interview candidates, to take your time, to, you know, to see who else in the community would be interested, so on and so forth. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Rodriguez. Our next speaker is Maria Echavilla.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Maria. Maria, did I get you the last name right, Echavilla?
Ech Maria, close enough, you got the Spanish tongue right. Okay, I'd first like to recognize, um, City Councilman Carlos Torres for a great job done with the Pop Warner football kids. Um, I'd like to, I also, um, I'm a part of the Elizabeth Organizing Committee, and they have brought you five hundred seventy-four signatures to begin with speaking time at an earlier time, and we have yet to hear anything from that. Um, what else? There's a few things. Um, I'd like to know, to be honest, what's going on with this sixty-three thousand dollars that, you know, your superintendent, Enfa Hardo, owes the state and/or the taxpayers or whoever, they owe somebody. Somebody that is up there is making two hundred sixty-four hundred thousand dollars a year, and they owe in the state sixty-three thousand dollars. I mean, it doesn't make sense to me. Um, what else? It just, it can somebody make some sense. And if you're making that much money, I think if I want a meeting with you, I should be able to get, I'm entitled to that meeting. You're making enough money. It doesn't make any sense. I know I put in a over request, okay? I had, uh, Mr. Kennedy's secretary last month, um, was it last month? I don't know, but recently. Did, um, shh, what'd they do? They told me exactly how to word it. Then I get the letter of, that I didn't, that I didn't put in the years. But I don't know why they didn't tell me that the first time. I really believe that they're kind of like just wasting time. So I don't know what's going on up there. But did somebody answer any of those questions that I just said? And especially with that sixty-three thousand dollars. Anybody? Anybody?
We'll get the, uh, information to you, Ms. Echavaria. Next speaker, thank you for your comments, I'm going to miss, that's what I am. The next, uh, speaker we have is Fred Daniel. Fred Daniel? Let's see, Mr. Daniel in the room, call the next speaker. Mr. Gregory Sanders.
Good evening. My name is Gregory Sanders, I'm from Grand Canyon University. And, uh, this is my second board meeting. And the talent, I just want to say is great, it's unbelievable.
Thank you.
But my reason for tonight is come in just to introduce myself, uh, to the board because eventually Grand Canyon University will be reaching out to the Board of Elizabeth to see how we can help, how we can become a partner. We've done some great things with, uh, uh, Roselle, with, uh, Dr. West, and we want to come in and do the same thing for Grand, uh, for, uh, Elizabeth. And, uh, so thank you for your time. Have a nice day. Uh, any questions?
No, no, thank you, but please leave your information, certainly with, uh, Mr. Dunn, so that we can keep in contact.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Sanders, thank you for coming. Our next and final speaker. Ms., Mr. Jackson?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mr. Jackson. Good evening, Mr. Jackson.
I received an invite.
Sorry, Mr. Jackson, if you can speak closer to the microphone.
I received an invite from the Elizabeth Organization Committee in joining in telling the Elizabeth Board, Education Board, that we have an obligation and right to participate in our children's education. The Education Board is quite aware of these truths. Two words I employ you to keep in mind. Illuminati's New World, World Orders. The Board of Education is mandated to keep us out of the education of our children. Let me be clear. Our children's education is not the great concern for the Board of Education. The Board of Education members' greatest concern is their high salaries and their high social status. I propose that we organize the greatest campaign of our lives because the education and future of our children is our life. We must get these criminals out of the management of our children's future. I propose petition the Commission of Education to have every member of the Elizabeth Board of Education impeached immediately. Plan two, vote them out as simple as that. Let me be clear. Beware, do not put the total education of our children in the hands of others. Teach your children is your job. Just a moment, please. We had a person who was better of the evils. We let her become the scapegoat for the more evils. Beware of smiling faces, for many wears a mask. Teach your children to always read too much. Fear not your human command. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Mr. President, if I may, I have something, well, at this time, I go to the public comment portion of the meeting. I just like to say that if anybody here is getting paid, I want my fair share. Okay? I signed up for this as a volunteer. And I understood that everybody here was a volunteer. So if there's any truth to Mr. Jackson, that there's a high salary here on this board, I want my equal pay, okay?
You can add another zero to my salary.
I'm a citizen.
You can add another zero to my salary on the board as well.
I don't believe in tooth fairy spaceships or paying you as a board of, uh, any money. Okay, we're all volunteers here. And I resent the comment that I'm a criminal, I'm not a criminal.
Just for the record, I'm an educator, and I work in another district. And I resent the fact that you've gone and those criminals. We're here for the children, I do work for the children, that's why I do frontlineing. And all of us have children ourselves. So I think sincerely, we deserve a little bit of respect because we're doing a great job. We don't get paid. Our pay is having the children educated. So maybe you need to double check your background.
Uh, I also want to add that, you know, all of the stuff that we're doing is voluntary. I give, I have two jobs. I have another, um, organization I'm a part of, I'm a part of this board. I give my time all day, every day. So I give back to kids. I'm doing it because I want to do it, not because I have to do it. Okay, so I just, I'm kind of taken back by your comments.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I, I just want to echo the same sentiments of my colleagues. It, it's sort of offensive, uh, and I'm really taken back by the, by the comments of the speaker. Uh, I worked now in public service for a good twenty years of my life. Eight years as a city councilman, several years as a board member, and now back again, now serving as a role as a board president. And in just these past two weeks alone, I have probably put in eighty hours of my time in meeting with the superintendents, meeting with staff members, meeting with my colleagues, uh, getting consensus, building a rapport and communication like, like none other. And I think it's, I'm really taken back when someone comes up here and wants to throw out words like criminals or, or say that this board doesn't deserve or change. And certainly you're right, you don't have to like this, you don't have to vote for us, and that's fine. But, you know, you should damn well respect this board and, and respect the work that these men and women put in of their time. To come, you know, week after week or month after month, both to committee meetings. People think it's just here tonight, that right now it's nine-thirty, after this, we're going into a private session for legal matters, that my keeper's in that room for another two hours, come back down and stay here for, till two in the morning. Many of these people here have, have children at home, wives and families. And, and then to use that kind of, uh, the language, it's disturbing. And I want people at home to know and be clear, and as clear as, as I can be, not one single board member here, not one single board member gets a paycheck. Gets a, they don't get one single red penny for serving on the Elizabeth Board of Education. I served on the Elizabeth City Council back in the nineties. Board, council members were paid at the time sixteen, seventeen thousand dollars. I think we have councilmen tours in the room tonight, we could ask. I don't know what city council members make tonight, but it's, well, probably in excess of twenty-five thousand. Add your health benefits to that package, it's probably well into forty thousand. No board member here gets a cent. No board member here gets any health benefits. They do it for the love of their community, the love of the schoolchildren. So I echo that and I take offense to that because I've been doing this, born and raised in the city of Elizabeth for twenty years, five blocks from here. Mr. James Carrick devout for me, he knows, he knows that. My father, about fifteen years ago, took a bullet to, to his face when his little store was held up. So I'm born and raised, heart and soul here in this city, so I take offense to that. Take offense to anyone up here who wants to come up and challenge what we do. It's easier said than done, that I can tell you. And whenever I meet any constituents who have ideas, we welcome ideas, we welcome solutions. But if you can think you can do it better, you go down to the county clerk or city clerk, you get a petition. You get your signatures, you run for the office, and you campaign for it like everyone on here. But please don't ever come up here and insult the intelligence of this board and the people at home who watch this and think that these board members can call out names easily like we do. If you have evidence, if you have something to back it up, by all means do it. We take this job seriously. Every board member here knows, I take what I do seriously. I just don't take myself seriously. Because if not, I would have lost the law in Congress, we have to laugh at ourselves. And I think that's why this board works so well. Because, you know, when we leave here, and, and many times, we disagree. Everyone sees us up here and we vote for a lot of this, pack for a lot of the, uh, items on this agenda. They think that we're always voting, you know, in, um, in a block, yes, yes. But many, many times, a lot of hard work goes into this meeting, into what goes on behind the scenes in the committee meetings. Every staff member here who works so hard know the hours that, that we put in. And yes, there's a lot of disagreeing, but we work hard. And we work hard first and foremost for the children of this district and then for our community. So I take offense to that and to anyone. You can all run for this office, and so what you do is called democracy. Anything else? Thank you.
Now we're going to have, now, the president requests a motion to go into private session to consider matters exempt under the Open Public Meetings Act. Specifically for discussion of personnel, specifically DS, GK, LHS, MA, MA, NG, and MK, JH, NPA, GC, Interview Audit Corrective Action Plan, harassment, intimidation, and bullying results, and workers' compensation claims, specifically ES, KR, CZ, AG, and JD. The board will then reconvene in public to take formal action. Motion to go into private, Mr. Mr. Trillo, before I knew, I just want one further comment. Uh, something else that irritated me and agitated me this week when I read the forum that I got a call from a reporter from the Star Ledger, that City Council was passing a resolution, a resolution that the Board of Education should move the, the, the portion of the public participation from the back of the meeting to the front of the meeting. And I dear, you know, and that's offensive to me, that the City Council member, the member who was making the noise about that resolution was none other than Patricia Perkins Augusti, saying that we were trampling, trampling over the public participation for First Amendment rights to speak. This is the same councilwoman, as offensive as it may be, who just fifteen, about, in two thousand and one, arrested a city council member. Arrested, had a city council member arrested because that city council member was speaking out about the taxes that night, about the property tax increase in the budget. Wasn't being offensive, wasn't attacking any other of their council members. But the subject matter was offensive to that councilwoman. And Councilwoman Perkins ordered that that council member be removed. And to everyone's surprise, in that audience that night, the police officers came down behind the city councilman, asked the city councilman to leave because the council president wanted him removed. The council member asked the police officers, "Am I under arrest?" The police officers responded, "No, the council president wants you to leave." The council member responded, "Well, if I'm not under arrest, and this isn't China, then I'm not leaving." The councilwoman then demanded and asked that the police officers arrest the council member. And the police officers had no choice because the council president gave the order. The council, the police officers then removed the handcuffs and had the handcuffs, physically handcuffed that council member, humiliated and ashamed, and removed from the Elizabeth City Council chambers. That same council member then brought a suit against Councilwoman Perkins Augusti for violation of his civil rights under the First Amendment. It went to federal trial, a long trial, a trial that lasted two weeks. And she was found guilty. She then found it interesting enough that she would appeal it, appeal it on the dime of the city because the city would pay for it, the city lawyers and us, the taxpayers, went all the way to the United States Supreme Court, and they didn't hear it. The rulings stood. She was found guilty of violating civil rights of, of the councilman and violating, violation of First Amendment rights. How do I know this so well? Because I was the councilman she arrested. So that's why it's offensive that that city councilwoman now would ask a resolution at City Hall that we move public participation like we trampled over the citizens of the city. We, more than anyone, welcome public participation. We do because tonight, you saw the chambers packed here tonight. We're taking the Board of Education meetings throughout the city because we encourage, we want to engage more in public participation. Months ago, I asked my colleagues to have, have, have hall meetings to answer the questions of the public, whatever it may be, in whatever part of the city. And that's already for board members who don't even get paid. I'm asking them to go above and beyond. And here tonight, we recognize, we honor our, our young men and women, put them on the pedestal where they belong. Because I can see that when I was a child. I saw that nobody could make it if you came from the city of Elizabeth, and it's not true. Growing up five blocks from here, I'm insulted, I'm offended. And, and, and I'll tell this, I'll tell anyone at home, I, in a given month, I will always want to see these children up here being recognized, being acknowledged for their hard work, and for the parents and for the staff who participate. So no, we don't trample over First Amendment rights. We encourage public participation. And although we ask that it be done after the performances and after the recriminations, the parents, so they may have to sacrifice an hour or two to endure the performances and the recognition. That's really, really heartfelt. Well, knowing that, I really don't care. Because we do not shut out the public, we encourage the public. We welcome them here, we, every board member here tonight has business cards with phone numbers, with email addresses, we encourage you to reach out to us. Thank you. The board will now reconvene in public to take formal action. We have a motion from Commissioner Trillo and a second from Commissioner Espina. Robal.
Batlas. Castillo.
Yes.
Denosa.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Nazca.
Yes.
Padla.
Yes.
Pereira.
Yes.
Traheya.
Yes.
Montero.